Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, November 1st, 2022. I have a meeting announcement. All council meetings are live streamed on the city's website. Will the clerk please take the roll call?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross, Mr. Kraus, Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kail Smith, President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next order of business is to amend, oh, I'm sorry. As we join from our remote locations, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance if you're able to, and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please, you may be seated. And our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is amended. And our next order of business is proclamations. We have one to be presented to the wonderful Mr. Kevin McMahon. Please come forward with all your guests. You can come up here with me. I don't think anybody remembers a time when Pittsburgh wasn't so famous for our cultural district and the amazing things that we see in downtown. And for the past 21 years, this man's been the leader of that. So I just want to thank him for all the work that you've been doing. You can come up here with me. Okay? You can all come up.
Thank you.
Where is, J. Kevin McMahon is retiring at the end of 2022 after 21 years of serving as President and CEO of the Pittsburgh Cultural Trust. Under his guidance, the Cultural Trust has become renowned for its ability to attract over 2 million people each year to more than 2,000 performing arts events, festivals, virtual arts exhibits, and public art installations, and educational programs. And he has successfully helped the Cultural Trust overcome the operating deficit from the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas Mr. McMahon has arrived in May of 2001 and began diversifying, the senior management beginning different perspectives, bringing different perspectives from around the table, which led to the presentation of arts and cultural festivals, and the Pittsburgh premiere of several internationally renowned theater companies, increased the scope of the Broadway in Pittsburgh, and launched the very popular cultural district gallery crawls. And whereas he oversaw several highly successful artistic mergers with the Cultural Trust and helped the growth of several cultural nonprofits, Mr. McMahon also paved the way for the commercial and residential development in downtown Pittsburgh. The Pittsburgh Post Gazette declared the organization "the greatest creative force in Pittsburgh" because of its spirit of reinvention. And whereas Mr. McMahon also bought several key art-based institutions under the Cultural Trust umbrella, and started the Pittsburgh International Festivals of First, which bought the beloved Rubber Duck Project to the Allegheny River in 2013. The inflated yellow duck brought smiles to thousands of people who lined the banks of the North Shore to catch a glimpse of the 40-foot duck. And whereas the Pittsburgh Cultural Trust, did you ever think you'd be famous for that, huh? And whereas the Pittsburgh Cultural Trust has been placed within the top five performing arts centers in the United States and is viewed as a nationwide model on how the arts can play a pivotal role in urban revitalization. And whereas Mr. McMahon continues teaching as an adjunct professor, plans to continue teaching as an adjunct professor at Carnegie Mellon University, and he and his wife Kristen plan to spend time in the cultural district, only this time to simply enjoy the shows. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend Mr. Kevin McMahon and thank him for his 21 years of bringing the arts to the City of Pittsburgh, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, November 1st, 2022 to be Kevin McMahon Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Can I have a motion to approve in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation's approved. And so, thank you. Thank you very much. We could just say a few words, and then we're going to have members say some words. I'm sure they all want to say some things to thank you.
A very few words. First, Council President, thank you very much, and members of council, I really, really appreciate this, and it's very much, I take this as a thank you to the entire team. Many, many other folks deserve this far more than I do, and we all want you to know that we're doing this all because we love this city so very much, and we love the people of Pittsburgh. So thank you very much for this great honor.
Do you want to introduce yourselves? If you have something you'd like to say, please say it.
You don't have to say anything.
This is your chance.
If you can introduce us, go ahead. Cheryl?
Cheryl. I'm his executive assistant, and he's been wonderful to work for her for the last 11 years, and I'm truly going to miss him, and so is the city.
I'm Rhonda Nesbit, Executive Vice President of the Pittsburgh Cultural Trust, and I've been fortunate enough to work with Kevin for his entire tenure. I kind of came with the trust, having been hired by Carol Brown, so I was like the furniture, but it's been a really wonderful honor to be able to do what we've been able to do with this, for the city and for the region, under Kevin's leadership.
Good morning. I'm Tracy Edmonds. I'm the Vice President of Arts Education. I've been at the trust for the last 19 years, and it's been a pleasure to work under Kevin's leadership.
Good morning. I'm Carol Devera Roberts, and I'm the Manager of Board Engagement and Executive Special Projects, and it's been an honor and privilege to work with an extraordinary leader. Thank you.
I'm Maureen Shannon. I'm the Head of HR at the trust and the newcomer to this group, but it has been a great experience working with Kevin and this entire management group, and congratulations, Kevin.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Teri Bell. I'm the Vice President of Strategic Partnerships and Community Engagement at the trust, and it's been my honor and pleasure to work under Kevin McMahon's leadership for the last five years and to learn and grow in my role. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nick Giganti. I'm the Senior Vice President of Development and Real Estate at the Cultural Trust. I've been at the trust for 20 years, working with Kevin. It's been a pleasure and an honor, and thank you for this great day. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Members, do you want to say something? Let's start with.
Yeah. No? Okay. I didn't realize you were responsible for the big rubber ducky. Yeah, that's great. For better it works. Right. I think for better. It was really interesting and fun to have it here. As I told you earlier, you know, I frequent the theater district often, and you've really transformed that place where it's now, I believe, one of our best tourist attractions. Everywhere I go, people who come to town, they love to catch shows down there. So you did a really great job, and it's really great to see a fantastic team behind you. And I know that things are going to go without, you know, any bumps in the road because you've all worked together for a long time, and I look forward to visiting often as I do. Thanks.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. McMahon. Sometimes people don't recognize, because I've been in this role now for nine years, that long, long ago, we overlapped for just a month or two at the arts community. So I was the first executive director of the Greater Pittsburgh Arts Alliance that convened the Breakfast Buddies and the Small and Medium Arts Coalition and brought them together. So I was only there for about 20 months or so, I think, and I was leaving right at the end. I'm just now calculating back and looking at this proclamation. When, what year was that? I must have been leaving at the end of 2001 when you were just arriving, and I think we overlapped for just a few months, and I just cannot believe how long ago that has been. And so thank you for all of your time and commitment and service, and your whole team to the city of Pittsburgh. I appreciate it.
And Councilman Lavelle, this is actually mostly in your district, so I know that you have a lot of involvement, but I want to say a few words.
Sure. Thank you. Actually, my first year on council, we had a meeting, and your words to me were, treat us like a community, like you would Shady Side or the Hill District or Manchester, treat us like a neighborhood. And in part, that's because you spent time really using the Cultural Trust to create a true neighborhood that is now a downtown neighborhood that is thriving and vibrant. And so I just want to thank you for all your years of work, and your team, for all that they've done over the years. And there are two significant projects that although you won't be here to see them finished, will also be a part of your legacy. I saw one just got an RCAP award yesterday, so congratulations on the potential conversion to the cinema downtown, which will be, again, part of creating a true neighborhood downtown. And then there's also this wonderful block around Ninth Street between Duquesne Boulevard and Penn Avenue that will also be a signature of your legacy and the work that you've done over the years. So thank you for all you've done to help transform and truly create a vibrant downtown.
Thank you for your leadership as our councilman. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger?
Well, I really just want to thank you for your years of service. To you and your team, I, like Councilman Coghill, have seen the benefits of it and really understood that, like sports, the arts have been a critical economic driver for our city, and that's thanks in part to the work that you've done, making sure that we have a vibrant downtown with a very, very dense theater district that has helped restaurants, has helped small businesses. One of my favorite memories is, I mean, it happens often, is going to the theater, maybe to a show on a Friday night, and maybe there's a, or a Saturday night, and maybe there's a baseball game at the same time, and it's warm outside, and there are just people, you know, you don't even have to have anything to do. You can just walk around downtown and feel incredibly like you're in the mix, like you're in the mix with the people downtown. You can see the vibrancy of that area. I know that COVID has hurt that a little bit, but it's already coming back in my mind, and it's thanks in large part to the work that you've done to be a real anchor for all of downtown, and particularly the cultural district. So thank you again for all of your work and to that of your team.
Thank you. Councilman?
Congratulations, Mr. McMahon. I feel bad that our time would be cut short. We had a meeting recently where we're going over what that district looks like, or my new district, what that would look like, and how that would cover the cultural district. It's just been very impressive to learn more and more about everything that you've done, and I just want to say that I appreciate everything you put into the arts and entertainment, and really, you know, to bring that cultural district up in a way that makes Pittsburgh very vibrant, and, you know, obviously like what others said, how it attracts everyone. But also, there's so many different ways that it reaches out to the whole family, and appreciate everything that you and your staff have done to bring it to that level. So I look forward to, you know, working with your legacy that you're leaving. So thank you for everything.
Thank you. And I'm just going to really quickly just say thank you for all, for everything you do. Thank you for being the leader. And thank you for, one of the first meetings we had, you came to me and said, how can we increase involvement in the Cultural Trust and diversify it a little bit more, and how can we do more with the kids in the community, kids in the school, and in your neighborhoods? And so for that part, I will always be very grateful for that because it meant so much. And you also work with Pittsburgh Musical Theater, which is actually in the city of Pittsburgh in the West End, and a lot of people do not do that, and they give grants to our area for kids to participate in the performing arts in the West End. So thank you very much for all that you do and for helping us in so many ways. I think there's a lot more to do, and I'm looking forward to working with you on those things. All the members want to come forward, please? For photo?
Little photo, maybe? Is that possible?
Yeah, we'll do the photo.
Perfect. Great.
Our office.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. 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 Thank you.[958.25][958.25][S01. Where is, Councilwoman Gross presents. Whereas Pittsburgh and other cities across Pennsylvania have seen a significant increase in the number of incarcerated women and people who may have become pregnant over the past three decades, the Dignity for Incarcerated Women Act would update oversight and protections in light of this population rise that has led to the inhumane treatment, excuse me, of incarcerated women who are disproportionately black. Whereas House Bill 1419 would ban schlacking pregnant people who often perceive medical treatment while being chained to their beds, and would enhance restraint documentation so that more information is available about the rate and duration of schlacking. Whereas, the act would also provide for free period and incontinence products for incarcerated individuals, allow three days of post-delivery bonding time between parent and newborn child, and improve visitation rights for incarcerated parents and their children. And whereas, trauma-informed practices and documentation would be incorporated into staff training for all corrections officers interacting with pregnant and postpartum people is part of the act. And whereas, the training program would ensure that participating correctional officers are informed about the potential negative impacts their actions could have on the physical and mental health of the pregnant or postpartum individual and unborn child, including the impact of being placed in restrictive housing and invasive searches on a pregnant individual. And whereas, co-sponsor Representative Summer Lee first employed trauma-informed care and training language in House Bill 1014 of 2019, which was then used by prime sponsor representatives Lori Mizugorsky, Mike Jones, Morgan Cephas, and Tina M. Davis, who introduced the Dignity for Incarcerated Women Act in May of 2021. This group of legislators worked alongside the Dignity Act now collective to center the voices of incarcerated people who are pregnant or may become pregnant to advance these medical protections. And whereas, House Bill 1419 passed unanimously from the House of Representatives on September 14th, 2022, and was referred to the Senate Judiciary Committee on September 21st, 2022. And whereas, similar protections have been recently implemented in federal incarceration facilities. In 2017, Senators Warren and Booker first introduced the Dignity for Incarcerated Women Act in Congress. And whereas, three of the provisions of the federal bills were included in a larger criminal justice package that was signed into law in December 2018, also known as the First Stepped Act. Number one, to effectively ban the schlacking of pregnant women. Two, require incarcerated individuals be placed within 500 miles of the nearest family member. And three, provide tampons and pads to all women behind bars free of charge. Whereas, House Bill 1419 would advance well-vetted provisions at both the state and county level with necessary oversight from children and youth services that will not only benefit incarcerated women, but their children, families, and society as a whole. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh hereby urges the Pennsylvania State Senate and Governor Tom Wolf to pass House Bill 1419, known as the Dignity for Incarcerated Women Act, intended to improve conditions and treatment of pregnant people in Pennsylvania's jails and prisons. And be it further resolved that a copy of this will of council shall be sent to the Allegheny County delegation of the Pennsylvania General Assembly and Governor Tom Wolf. Can we have a motion to approve in a second?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Will council's approved. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Madam President. And I thank all council members for your support, and there are people here from the coalition who'll be coming to public comment, and I just want to thank them for bringing this forward to our attention so the city of Pittsburgh can send an official message to our General Assembly that they should pass this bill. And these are just basic human rights protections that we're happy to speak up for. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members? I just want to say it's hard to believe some of this even has to be in a bill, but thank you very much for bringing it forward. Our next order is the will of council from Councilman Kraus.
Yes. I'd like to thank our members for their support this morning. We will be taking a field trip after council to go over to meet with striking workers at the Post Gazette. I know Councilwoman Wilson's joining us. I just want to extend the invitation to anyone who wishes to come over with us. We'll just be there briefly, but I would like to be able to present the council's support of the striking PG workers and show them that we're there with them. So, whereas a free press is a pillar of American democracy, and whereas the Pittsburgh Post Gazette, now owned by Block Communications, has been a vital source of information since 1786, reporting authentically and objectively on government activities. And whereas, as of October 6th, 2022, the workers are responsible, who are responsible for designing, printing, distributing, advertising, sales, accounts receivable, and content creation for the Post Gazette are on strike. And whereas, the strike is in response to unfair labor practices by the management of the Pittsburgh Post Gazette, including unilateral changes to their healthcare plan. And whereas, the workers have been working without a collective bargaining agreement since March of 2017. And whereas, despite extensive negotiations, Post Gazette management has refused to engage in good-faith bargaining, and the workers have not had a pay raise for 16 years. And whereas, these workers are proud members of the following unions: Communication Workers of America Local 14842, Communication Workers of America Local 14827, Teamsters Local 205211, Pressmen's Union Local 24M9N, and the Newspaper Guild of Pittsburgh Local 38061. And whereas, labor unions are critical in protecting workers and ensuring that workers are paid a living wage, given better working conditions, and provide a voice on the job. And whereas, Pittsburgh has always been a union town, and the city of Pittsburgh always stands with its union workers. Now therefore be it resolved that this council of the city of Pittsburgh condemns the actions of the owners and management of the Pittsburgh Post Gazette for choosing profits over the needs of their workers, and that the council of the city of Pittsburgh stands in solidarity with all Pittsburgh Post Gazette strikers. And be it even further resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby call on Block Communications and the management of the Post Gazette to recognize the value of their workforce and unfair labor practices, bargaining good faith, and fashion a collective bargaining agreement now.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there a motion to approve in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The will's approved, Councilman.
Thanks, Madam President, and thanks again to all members. And I do apologize for the sort of springing in on you that we're heading over there, but I promise you, if your schedules don't permit, I will carry the voice of all members to say that you are all collectively there in mind, body, if not body, mind, and spirit, and that we stand with the Post Gazette strikers. So thank you again for your support, and let's hope this puts an end to it.
Thank you. Is there anything else from members? Saying that, we'll move on to our next order of business. Thank you both for your rules of council today. And our next order of business is public comment, and I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters that concern official action or deliberations which are or may be before City Council. Threats and profanity will not be permitted. May we have the first registered speaker, please? And when you come to the podium, please state your name and your neighborhood for the record. You have three minutes to speak. And when the yellow light comes on, you have two minutes to summarize. The first speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, please.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Biltsoober Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate for President 2024. 412-969-7997 is my primary telephone text. A concern of council, see all Democratic Party people, is yes to Democratic Party DA Prosecutor Stephen Zapala, S.Z. This is a civil rights bias violation. The Global Intelligence Society and the Global Intelligence Information Network reports to the Inter-American Commission on Human Rights includes the 25 October 2022 DA S.Z. Proct Circus. The office of the district attorney across the United States is in decline. Offices DA across the country and here are in disrepute due to false, fake, fraudulent acts. A DA such as S.Z. can be criminally prosecuted for acts in the exercise of his or her office. Mr. Kraus and Mr. Burgess, Pittsburgh councilors, who have done free speech civil rights violations, in my view, regarding council public comment, gave potential prosecutor S.Z. dancing bear hugs in the 25 October circus, witnessed in the council room by Black African and White European descent primates. But no one of Native American, Asian, Latin descent. Mr. Ms. Kail Smith, in my view, free speech, public comment, civil rights violator, word hugged S.Z. with family noogies. KB and KS hugs are publicly recorded, pro-SZ informational bias acts, lacking intelligence, in my view. Ms. Gross, absent from this circus, no lack. The council heralds S.Z. as a champion of Pittsburgh Allegheny County citizens who endure domestic violence, but ignores citizens who endure reputational violence due to false arrest, fake investigations, fraudulent charges authorized by DA S.Z. This is circus smell. I know, I am one, cleared by the court 30 June 2022 in PASC VRLM 2017 to 2022. He is a loser. I am the winner. You did not, none of you, came to me and said, this was wrong, what was done, the false arrest, the fake investigation, the incarceration for 12 hours in Allegheny County Jail, all of that. None of you, none of you councilors had enough civility to approach me about this.
Thank you. Next speaker is Avis Lee. Avis Lee.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Avis Lee, 2750 Broadway Avenue, Dormont, PA. I am a returning citizen who has served time at the original Allegheny County Jail, SCI Munsey for Women, and SCI Cambridge Springs for Women. On February 12th, 2021, I was granted executive clemency from the Pennsylvania Board of Pardons and Governor Tom Wolf. I'm a very recent former employee of UPMC McGee Women's Hospital. I worked in the Pregnant Women's Recovery Center there. I'm here to make you aware of the dangerous practice of county and state prisons in Pennsylvania shackling the right ankle of pregnant women to their hospital beds. A lawsuit was filed and won on behalf of these women, and the judges ruled that this practice was deceased. However, we have reports that it's still continuing. Many pregnant women are diagnosed with gestational diabetes, which can cause enormous swelling to the hands, wrists, feet, and ankles. Wearing shackles will compound this ankle swelling and cut off circulation, putting undue stress undue stress on the pregnant mother's heart and her fetus's heart. In this day and age of an unprecedented opioid epidemic, many pregnant women are on maintenance medications such as methadone, Suboxone, Subutex injections, VivaTral injections, and buprenorphine. The maintenance medications, while curbing their desire for heroin, fentanyl, and alcohol, are under research for the long-term effects on pregnant women and their fetuses and their effects. These effects may be exacerbated by having the pregnant mother who is giving birth shackled to her bed by one ankle while she is in the throes of her birthing process. An undocumented number of these women's pregnancies are often a result of rape, incest, and sex trafficking, in which some were bound to beds, which is traumatic. And they're being bound again by shackles to their hospital bed as they give birth. It's trauma on top of trauma. After giving birth, they are now faced with postpartum depression, which is compounded by post-traumatic stress disorder from their hospital ordeal of being shackled to their beds. I believe in local government and your power to effect change and your role in office that you hold. I urge you to go down on the right side of history and enforce the total elimination of shackling pregnant women to hospital beds to give birth when they are in custody of county and state prisons in Pennsylvania. Thank you for your time and cooperation.
Thank you. Can we have the next registered speaker? Eda Sotera.
Hello, everyone. My name is Eda Sotera. I live at 3807 Melwood. I've lived in Pittsburgh since 1998. I want to thank Deb, my councilperson, for putting this will of council before you all and for you all willing it. I work with an organization called Let's Get Free, the Women in Trans Prisoner Defense Committee, and talk and speak to incarcerated women every day and also trans people. And, you know, like the council, the chairwoman said, "This is really the bare minimum that you willed into council." The bare minimum has been willed, and I very much appreciate that. And we need that. And I just, I'm hearing like the tough-on-crime rhetoric. People criticize even the simple, basic human rights of having trauma-informed care, menstrual pads, not being shackled when you're giving birth. It's like the bare minimum. And people, critics will say, "This is, you're being soft on crime, doing these bare things." And I think about all of the people that I know who are incarcerated. And we really, other people, when they get into situations where people are harmed and are convicted and sentenced to prison, we really other them. We don't see ourselves in them. We throw them away, we invisibilize them, and they need the most care. And treating them with respect and trauma-informed care, we really need places of healing. And this is a very small step into creating places of healing for people when they're having experiences and trauma. And I just, I thank you. And I just, I really, I'm calling for a paradigm shift of the way that we deal with harm, our punishment, the way that we indict ourselves, the way that we indict our community members when they've trespassed. We really need just a culture of healing, and your will of council has supported this very small step today. So thanks.
Our next speaker is Melanie Taylor.
Actually, I'm not Melanie Taylor. My name is Amber Sloan. I'm speaking on behalf of Melanie Taylor.
Amber, Amber, let me get through the registered speakers then, please.
Okay. She wanted me to come up.
Thank you. And she's not here?
Signal later.
It has to be the registered speaker. We'll give time at the end of the meeting for people to speak.
Oh, okay. I know. That's what.
Yeah.
Hi.
Hi, good morning. Tell me, your name?
My name is Melanie Taylor.
Thank you.
I work for the Dignity Act Now Collective. And we, in trying to pass the HB 1419 bill, over in Allegheny County jails and in Pennsylvania jails, the average of pads given to someone who is incarcerated is five per person, which is inhumane. It's disgusting, and it leads to larger problems as time goes on, like yeast infections, BV, kidney failure, that can lead to that. So fixing this problem before it gets any worse can save so many lives and so many people. So also with the HB 1419 bill, it allows mothers, instead of their child being ripped out of their hands at, like, as soon as they give birth, it allows them to also have time to bond with their children. This also, once a mother is released, she's going to want her child back. And I believe that allowing that bonding time allows that mother to build a connection with her child, inform that empathy, bond with her child in order to come out and want to do better for her family. So yes, that's what I have to say.
Thank you very much. And our next speaker is William Parker. Is there William Parker online? I see.
What happened to the Stop the Violence Grant? Do you hear me?
Good morning, Mr. Parker. Yes, please state your name and neighborhood for the record.
William Parker, Pittsburgh, Allegheny County.
Thank you.
I want to know what happened to the Stop the Violence Grants? What happened to the Stop the Violence Grants? What happened to the Stop the Violence Grants? This is a million dollars of our tax dollars, and we don't know what happened to the Stop the Violence Grants? We've now reached our 60th murder here in Pittsburgh and countless shootings, as well as other acts of violence. Six people were shot outside a funeral service last week. The grandmother of the deceased, she called the authorities to let them know about a potential threat at the funeral service, and they dropped the ball. And that's why I want to know, who can we call in our community besides the police when we have concerns for safety? And that's why I want to know what happened to the Stop the Violence Grants? Y'all keep giving this money to everybody but the people who deserve it, the people who are actually on the front lines and in the field. You keep giving this money to the Pooh's Foundation. Stop that. Stop it. You got Jay Gilmer over there putting out this Stop the Violence messages and everything like that. But I've contacted him, and he can't even tell me where this money went. That's $1 million of our tax dollars. I want to know where, what happened to this money? The grant was supposed to go out at the beginning of September. I heard it went out at the beginning of October, but we can't find out who received it and how much they received. I'm tired of y'all getting in front of these cameras at these media press releases talking about thoughts and prayers. Tell us where these Stop the Violence Grants went. Tell us that. Be helpful. This is, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, hell, what? Three, four, five protests outside of Ed Gaines' house, outside of Ed Gaines' house already by myself. Ask him, ask Ed, trying to ask him. What's the silence? Why are y'all trying to hide where this money has went? This money is supposed to be helping us to stop the violence. And y'all just sitting back with no answers. This is why I'm asking, and I'm stressing, everybody, yes, I'm a Black Democrat, I'm always going to be a Black Democrat or independent, but this election, next Tuesday, I'm voting for Dr. Oz. And I suggest you all do the same. Vote for Dr. Oz. Don't be blinded by these Democrats keep feeding us the same crap. Okay? And I'm going to finish with repeating, asking this question. What happened to the Stop the Violence Grants? What happened to the Stop the Violence Grants? Get on your contacts, find out who they went to. I want to hear some type of, I want to see something come out to let us know by next week. What happened to the Stop the Violence Grants? I'm not going to let y'all bury this. We want to know who we can contact in the community besides the police.
That exhausts our registered speakers. And now, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address City Council? Amber, does anyone want to come forward?
Good morning, y'all.
Good morning, Amber.
How y'all doing? My name is Amber Sloan. I'm a Pittsburgh resident. I'm also an Allegheny County Democratic Committee woman, which is Burgess's district. I'm also a formerly incarcerated woman who served 14 years and eight months in federal prison. Violence interrupter on the front lines, don't work for Allegheny County Cure Violence, Community Success Coach at Community College, Allegheny County. So I'm here to speak on behalf of women who are incarcerated. I speak on behalf of the indigent women who are incarcerated, who are in need of sanitary napkins, as I was an indigent individual. So I asked, when you guys make these decisions as women as well, did you think about those things of women needing the sanitary napkins, the things to treat themselves after post-traumatic disorder, watching women being four-pointed to the beds and having a child imagined, you know what I mean? So I just ask that you guys think about that when you go forward with this bill. That's it. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council?
Good morning, Council. My name is Amy Comparatori. I am in East Allegheny, otherwise known as Dutch Town, Mr. Wilson's district. And I wanted to address you today because of, again, repetitive theme here with the violence. I live about 200 feet, and my building is the Presley Street High Rise. And we're about maybe 50 feet back from the Giant Eagle and probably 200 feet from the bus stop where the Cedar Avenue shooting happened. Two people that were just waiting for their bus, a human right, a civil right. It could have been me out there that day. Thank God it wasn't. But it could have been any, any bus rider. And Betty and Betty actually lived in my building. And we have a huge amount of people in my building right now that are hurting. The bus stop, we lay candles at it, it's become a vigil in part for many weeks now. We need to do, revitalize this community. East Allegheny, from East Ohio down to Cedar Avenue, is a totally different type of neighborhood, a totally different type of energy than when you go from East Ohio up to North Ave. Totally different energy. You can tell where the money is being put, and more importantly, where it's not being put. East Ohio Street is almost desolate. If we could turn East Ohio into something like the revitalized Cultural District that we had here, you know, or how the Strip District went from basically being the red light district to the prize that it is and love today. If we could do that for the North Side and the 20-some tents, that line right across from the, from the Sue Murray Pole. Let's not forget that we still have the homeless. And it was, I was told by a police officer one day that it was under Mayor Peduto, oddly enough, who I highly supported, and I still support Democrats, that there is a ordinance, and I don't know where, but maybe you can find it and alter it, that basically if you have a tent, you don't need a permit, you don't need anything, you could just put up your tent and do this. This is, this is bad for the community, as well as it's bad for the homeless, and it's adding to a very severe problem. And I hope that we can come to a solution together, and I would love to talk to some of you further about it. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're going to talk to Councilman Wilson and Ricky Moody and our solicitor, and they'll stop and talk to you after the meeting. Okay, I'm sorry. Ms. Brown?
My name is Yvonne Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's right at the top of Bedford. I wanted to start off today by saying thank you to your, your, I don't know whether these chief or commander over your traffic, because there was a police officer up by the school. And they did slow down. Now, you had him up there one day. I'd take the babies to school, there wasn't, he wasn't there today, and they were moving kind of a little faster than what they did when the policeman was there. I wanted to say thank you to, I think it's Commander or Chief Rippey?
Ripple.
Rippey? Okay.
Commander Ripple.
Ripple. Okay. Yeah, I knew it was something, Rippey. So anyway, and then I think the other police officer was Ron. And I was explaining to him, I went over to him and thanked him, and I said, "I will be going to City Council to let them know that someone hurt us, and the commander sent him up there." I'm saying this because our babies are, they're our jewels. You might not think so, but these little babies that have run across the street not knowing that someone is coming too fast, not paying any attention. Okay? Then also, I wanted to say to Ms. Gross, you know, I have a really, a big problem with you, because when you stood there that time and said, when the police, they were getting a new commander, new chief of police, and you stood and said, "That me and the mayor decided that we would put the hill with your district." But we don't have cars, and to get over to your district, that's two buses. I went to my councilman and said, "Wait a minute, the mayor promised." And I was arguing with Marty Griffin on TV, that he, on the radio, that he should come to every neighborhood. Marty Griffin's going, "Oh, overtime, overtime." Not overtime, he needed to hear us, and we needed to hear him. And we didn't, and we had a black businessman, Dave Fields, that they came and said, "Who did you, who are you going to call?" Once they got rid of Chief Harper, they tasered that man in his district, in his, in his building, where he sold cars. And I was saying, "If you had come to our neighborhood, he could have told you, and we would have told you, that we were being mistreated and being harassed by the police." Now, he's a businessman, he was an older man, and they tasered him. I saw him, he was on the floor. They the one in his business. These are the police to come back, who you going to call? See, you need to know. I thank her for what she did as far as with the shackles, because you just didn't know, they shackled the women that have babies. Why? They're still human beings, and these babies, if they're not coming out right, and the mother's not coming out right, not going through the trauma, it affects them and it affects the baby too, because he got the same heartbeat like her. Ooh.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Good morning, Bernadette.
I had something all written out, so hopefully my brain doesn't spitfire. My heart is with these individuals advocating for the women. I was a volunteer bus driver to, working with families outside under the auspices of Family Services of Western Pennsylvania. I drove to all the prisons for 15 years. I raised all the tangible resources, the gifts for the Christmas party for kids who had a parent or both parents in the state and federal prisons. When these women tell you that the women are invisible in prison and jails, they are absolutely correct. I am really surprised that it's still happening, and I apologize for being naive. It's been a long time since I worked with the families. I can honestly say, I would have, I literally, for the men's prisons, I would have to go through their dating books, the women would have to write down what their, anybody would have to write down their relationship to the prisoners. And some of them had multiple fiancés, and we had to make sure that we didn't have one or more, like, we didn't have multiple fiancés to the same guy. And trust me, that would happen at Camp Hill a lot. Anyway, it was like pulling teeth without Novocain, when I would pick up the phone and I would call the families of the women in Cambridge Springs and Muncie. I don't even know if Muncie's still there. Nobody wanted to come even visit. even know if Muncie's still there. Nobody wanted to come even visit the women. They are forgotten, and from the sounds of what I'm hearing today, it still is that way. We need a triage of city, county, state, federal, to step in and stop this. I, I can't imagine having a child ripped from my arms at birth. I can't imagine what a woman go, what a woman goes through every month, sometimes, if you're not even regular. I remember I was fishing behind the, the Mercer Prison, there was a fishing spot, because some of the prisons, they had three to four hour visits back then. And I would drop off the people, and I'd take my fishing rod, and my older kids were all with me at, at my side on all the trips, and we would go fishing. And there was a, there was a guard in uniform fishing along with us. He would crack jokes when he used to work up at Cambridge Springs and say, oh yeah, we get truckloads of pads, and we just throw them to them, even the female guards. That mentality is still happening, and it should not be. I commend you guys for trying to get this done. What I was going to speak about, and I hope I, I don't have time, I'll come back tomorrow. Beachview needs a rec center. Anthony?
Thank you. Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council?
My officer that used to move the chairs is not here today.
Ira. Officer, can you help her? Sorry. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Medusa Carter. I am a co-founder of the Dignity Act Now Collective. Founded in 2019, we went to Representative Morgan Cephas to ask that she allow impacted people to weigh in on this package of legislation. Initially, a package of 12 pieces of policy, we went to different legislators. As formerly incarcerated people, we actually created policy that was a part of this legislation. Representatives such as Summer Lee, State Rep Elizabeth Fiedler, the People's Rep Movida Harrell Johnson, and we created policy that helped to introduce this legislation, demonstrating the true meaning of co-governance. Needless to say, we founded the collective, and it, we founded it as a campaign, and it became a collective. Today, we are here for two reasons. Because state sanctioned patriarchal violence against women, trans, and non-binary people is egregious and violates the human and civil liberties of mothers and caregivers in Pennsylvania. And two, because of the blood, sweat, and tears, and the collective actions of organizers, legislators, and leaders across Pennsylvania. We recognize that national organizations such as Dream Corps and empathy leader Tony Willis of Bardella's House worked side by side with Representative Cephas Morgan and Mike Jones, from different sides of the fence, but they worked together making this a bipartisan bill. So, we unanimously, unanimously passed this bill in the House and through the Judiciary Committee, which is almost unheard of for criminal justice reform bills. We were able to bring this about. Philadelphia jails, as, as we speak, pregnant mothers are in solitary confinement. Even here in Allegheny County Jail, pregnant mothers are in solitary confinement, which exasperates anything that they could be going through. We know that a lot of these places have asbestos and mold, and we know that these conditions are inhumane and inadequate to house women, trans, or non-binary people. We are, reproductive justice is just a human right. It's, it's a simple human right, and it's under attack at every level of government right now, positioning incarcerated pregnant people underneath the whims of a system that dehumanizes mothers. Eighty percent of women in jail are mothers, and most of them are primary caretakers of their children's. These children carry the failures of our brutal, heartless carceral system. The number of women in, in Pennsylvania jails has increased more than 19-fold, from 242 in 1970 to 4,754 in 2015. Women of color are significantly, significantly overrepresented in the criminal justice system. We ask that you not only lean on your senators to bring this bill to pass, but we also ask that you inform your community, talk to people in your community, because this is an egregious thing, and it's devastating our communities. When we talk about the violence, part of this is removing the mothers from their communities. Part of this is causing trauma to those mothers. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address City Council? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Pastor Philip Battle Jr. I'm the pastor of New Light Temple Baptist Church in the Hill District. I am also the founder of the Western Pennsylvania Diaper Bank, which most of you know. I am here today to advocate for the homeless. I've became aware that there's $1.2 million that has already been given to the homeless. But in my, another professional capacity that I work in is for communities and schools. I am also the homeless resource specialist, or one of the homeless resource specialists for communities and schools. And I was reading in a trip where you, the council, were looking for solutions to homelessness, and I thought I might come today to let you know that one in 17 families with children between, in grades K through 12, are suffering with homelessness in the United States. And what I would like to suggest is that we, that each school district have a shelter for the students and their families in, in their district. There are different types of shelters that you can have. You can have emergency shelter, transitional shelter, and things of that nature, which I'm sure, I don't want to give you a lecture on it. But I just want to plant the seed that we have to do something, because right now, as my list, my, my case list grows, I don't have any place to send anyone, because everything is full. So, I kind of have to, have to make situations for them, to help them find housing. And also, this should be a holistic type of shelter, one that moves them into not just permanent housing, but to permanent housing that they own, so that they might be able to sustain themselves, not just until the child is out of school, but for the rest of their natural lives. I only got 30 seconds. So, I just want you to consider those things, and you'll see me again. I have a PowerPoint presentation that if you'd like, like to have it, if I could get your email address, I'll send it to you with all the data, and specific data for our area, for the Pittsburgh Public Schools. So, that's a solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council?
Hello. I didn't come with a prepared speech or anything, but my name is Rhonda Davis-Moore. I'm the founding director of Zakaya House Housing. Like my comrades, I wanted to speak on the women being shackled and mistreated in the state correctional facility. I too, I'm a returning citizen. I served four and a half years in a state correctional institution of Muncie for three months, and then I served the rest of my time in Cambridge Springs. What I do now is I house people coming from those facilities, men and women, so that tells us that there's alternative housing for women that we are in prison. I would like to suggest that we look at those things, instead of sending a woman to jail to have a child, and then their child being removed from their care. We know that that causes additional trauma, not only to the woman, but to the child who is growing up without their mother. When I went to prison, my son was 11 and a half months, my baby was four and a half years old. Could there have been alternative, alternative housing? There could have been, but it wasn't offered, and that's fine. But we know now that there's tons of alternative ways to keep women and their children together. And in order to stop the violence and the broken homes and the things that are happening now, we have to find a different solution than imprison, imprisoning our black mothers, because we know that our white counterparts don't endure this type of injustice in prison, so much as we can't even get a proper tampon or a peg. Imagine making those things to try to just feel comfortable, right? Women can't get proper bloomers and bras and different things like that in prison. Let me even talk about the visits that the young lady had talked about previous to me. Men get plenty of visits, we know that, right? But women do not, right? They don't see their children, so there's no bonding period, and they're made very uncomfortable, the visitors, when they do get time to see their children. So, I just want to just suggest that we find alternative ways to, one, give a person just the basic human right of dignity, right? Someone can do a crime, serve their time, still be in prison, but still deserve health care. They still deserve the love of their family. They still deserve to be in a warm place. Maybe not always comfortable, but a warm place, right? Rid of rats, roaches, and mice, especially for a woman, correct? So, I just want you to just understand that the situations in these prisons is not helping a woman come out to build. You have to have levels of support, which fortunately for me, I did. So, there are different alternatives for women to have housing with their children while they're pregnant. I have a young lady right now in my facility that is six months pregnant. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Seeing no further speakers, we move on to the next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. And we'll begin with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 882, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with the Hines Endowment for the Purpose of Receiving and Spending Grant Funds in the Amount of $2 Million to Support the Construction of Homewood Field.
Thank you. And Councilman, or Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Public Safety Services. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 883, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with the Federal Emergency Management Agency for the Purpose of Receiving and Spending Grant Funds in the Amount of $1,718,181.81, with a local match of $171,818.19 for the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus.
Thank you. And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 884, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Duquesne Light Company in the Amount of $7,053.10 in Settlement of a Claim for Damage to Property and Equipment Near 458 Stenton Avenue from a City Environmental Services Vehicle. Bill Number 885, Resolution Authorizing an Intro-Departmental Transfer in the Amount of $200,000 from Department of Law Salaries Account to Department of Law Judgments Account. The transfer is necessary to cover the costs of settlements through the end of 2022. Bill Number 886, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Kittleson LLC for Two Matters Filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas in the Amount Not to Exceed $22,360.45. Bill Number 887, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Thomas Fosse in the Amount of $6,002.99 in Settlement of a Claim for Damage to His Vehicle from a City Police Vehicle on Greenfield Road in Shunley Park on January 23, 2022.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Human Resources. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilperson Erica Strasburger presents Bill Number 888, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Human Resources and Civil Service Commission to Enter Into an Agreement with Willis Towers Watson for Services Related to Supporting the City with Development and Negotiations of Employee Benefits that are Provided to City Employees for Sum Not to Exceed $1,288,000 over Four Years and for the Payment of the Costs Thereof. Bill Number 889, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Human Resources and Civil Service on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement and/or Contract with Public Sector Search and Consulting, Inc., for Executive Search and Recruiting Services for the City's Police Chief Position and Providing for the Payment Thereof at an Overall Cost Not to Exceed $80,000. Bill Number 890, Resolution Providing for the Authorization to Make All Legitimate Expenditures for Payments and Agreements or Agreements with Various Agencies for Job Development and Employment Services Necessary to Implement the 2022 Neighborhood Employment Program and Providing the Periodic Transfer of Funds to be Used in the 2022 Neighborhood Employment Program for Payment of Costs Thereof, Cost Not to Exceed $150,000. And Bill Number 891, Resolution Providing the Authorization to Make All Legitimate Expenditures for Payments and Agreements or Agreements with Various Agencies to Provide Job Development and Employment Services, Wages and Fringe Benefits for Supervisor, Staff, Workers' Compensation, Unemployment Compensation, Vocational Skills Training, and On-the-Job Training, Outreach, Recruitment Costs, and Administrative Expenditures Necessary to Implement the 2022 Pittsburgh Partnership Employment Program and Providing the Periodic Transfer of Funds to be Used in the 2022 Pittsburgh Partnership Employment Program and for Payment of the Costs Thereof Not to Exceed $235,000.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation Performance and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilperson.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 892, Resolution Amending Resolution 526 of 2022, Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements or Amendments with Computronics USA, Inc., to Extend the Term on a Month-to-Month Basis at an Additional Cost Not to Exceed $140,000. Bill Number 893, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements and Amendments thereto with Foster &amp; Foster Consulting Actuaries, Inc., for Municipal Pension Contribution Data System at a Cost Not to Exceed $250,000. And Bill Number 894, Resolution Amending Resolution 817 of 2021, Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements or Amendments thereto with the Change Agent Training for Access to Their Learning Management System and Consultative Assistance to Adapt the City of Pittsburgh Gold Belt Workshop for E-Learning by Increasing the Not to Exceed Amount to $36,000.
Thank you. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 895, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with Community-Based Organizations for Community and Economic Development for Planning Assistance in Various Neighborhoods in the City and Providing Operating Support for These Groups and Provide for the Payment at a Cost Thereof Not to Exceed $500,000.
Thank you. And myself, Chair of Hearings, I have one resolution and five appointments to take the first resolution.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number 901, Resolution Updating and Amending the Rules of Council. Bill Number 896, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 450 of 2022. Bill Number 896, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 450 of 2022, Appointing Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith to Serve as a Member of the Board of Directors for the Allegheny County Sanitary Authority, Alka-San, for an Updated Term to Expire December 31, 2022. Bill Number 897, Resolution Appointing J. Parker Goolsby as a Member of the Disruptive Property Appeals Board of the City of Pittsburgh for a Term to Expire December 31, 2024. Bill Number 898, Resolution Appointing Jennifer Gula as a Director of the Department of Finance. Bill Number 899, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 566 of 2022, Appointing Deidra Washington to Serve as a Member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board for an Updated Term to Expire April 30, 2024. And Bill Number 900, Resolution Amending Resolution 567 of 2022, Appointing Morgan Overton to Serve as a Member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board for an Updated Term to Expire April 30, 2025.
Thank you. There's a lot there. So we have done interviews and we're updating those specific appointments. And the one for the Alka-San Board is I'm Serving the Unexpired Term for Councilman O'Connor, which ends sooner than what the administration initially presented for us. So that's a shorter term, but that's good. So we're going to have, let's do mine. There was interviews for, I think, an updated, there's Deidra Washington and Morgan Overton. Is there anybody else I'm missing, Madam Clerk?
No, it was just supposed to.
Okay. So let's take those first. Can we, motion to approve?
Yeah. Do you have a request to approve all the nominations, first bill, 899 and 900?
899 and 900.
896, 899, and 900.
896, 899, and 900.
900.
Thank you. We have motions. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Or, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, do real call on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Those proclamations are approved, or those appointments are approved, I'm sorry. And then now we have, which bills do we have left, Madam Clerk?
Bill Number 897 and 898.
And were they were not interviewed? Is that correct?
Correct. These are both new.
New. Okay. So I don't know what the will the body is. Whatever you want. I don't know if you want to interview or not.
Well, Madam President, so open for discussion. I think I personally am comfortable with moving Jennifer Gula as Director of Department of Finance, but I do understand the importance of the Disruptive Property Appeals Board. If members are more comfortable with interviewing Mr. Goolsby, then so am I.
Okay. So how about a motion to hold his for an interview? Which bill's that?
That would be 897, Madam President.
897. Okay, let's hold 897 for an interview.
Okay.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hold for an interview. Thank you. And then Jen Gula?
I would motion to approve if members are so inclined on 898.
Second, motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And that appointment's approved. So congratulations to Jen.
Yeah.
And that moves us on to unfinished businesses. Is there any unfinished business before City Council? Seeing none, we'll move on to the reports of committee for final action. And the first committee is Councilman Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 878, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for October 26, 2022, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 847, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Joy Marie Smith in the Amount of $3,558.95 in Settlement of a Claim for Damage to Her Vehicle from a City Public Works Vehicle near 2250 Center Avenue on October 26, 2021. Bill Number 848, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with Marshall, Dennehy, Warner, Coleman, and Goggan, P.C., in an Amount Not to Exceed $30,000 for Expert Legal Services related to litigation in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill Number 849, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with Spillman, Thomas, and Battle, P.L.C., in an Amount Not to Exceed $30,000 for Expert Legal Services related to litigation in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill Number 850, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with Thomas, Thomas, and Hafer, L.L.P., in an Amount Not to Exceed $30,000 for Expert Legal Services related to litigation in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill Number 851, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with Summers, McDonald, Hudok, Guthrie, and Rouch, P.C., in an Amount Not to Exceed $30,000 for Expert Legal Services related to litigation in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill Number 852, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 886 of 2021, Effective December 27, 2021, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2022 Capital Budget and the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program in a 2022-2027 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Flood Control Projects by $196,833.44 and Increasing Slope Failure Remediation by $196,833.44." And Bill Number 853, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with Agencies to Provide Emergency Shelter Services, Street Outreach Services, Rental Assistance, and Housing Relocation and Stabilization Services, and/or Data Collection Activities as Associated with the 2022 Emergency Solutions Grant Funds at a Cost Not to Exceed $1,198,946. And Bill Number 854, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with the Jewish Healthcare Foundation to Provide Administration and Operating Expenses, Housing and Housing-related Supportive Services to Persons with HIV and AIDS and Their Families at a Total Cost Not to Exceed $1,275,737.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor, the passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bills haven't received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 879, Reported a Committee on Public Works for October 26, 2022, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 839, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Apply for a Grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Tourism Fund for the Arsenal Renovation Phase One Project in the Amount of $428,700 for this Stated Purpose. And Bill Number 840, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with Power Construction Company for the Construction Phase of the CBD Signals Phase Four Project and Providing for the Payment of the Costs Thereof Not to Exceed $3,822,201.20.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor, the passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Ms. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilperson, I have to get used to that.
Councilman Bobby Wilson presents Committee on Land Use, Bill Number 880, Report for October 26, 2022, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 855, Resolution Further Amending Resolution 886 of 2021, Effective December 27, 2021, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2022 Capital Budget and a 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program and a 2022-2027 Capital Improvement Program, so as to Identify Specific Public Service Grant Projects in City Council District 2, District 3, District 4, and District 8, and Authorize a Subsequent Agreement or Agreements for Operation Administrative Expenses, Maintenance, Purchase of Equipment, and/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities on behalf of the Residents of the City of Pittsburgh."
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any, oh, I'm sorry. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor, the passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to our last committee of the day. Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. Councilwoman, Councilperson, thank you.
Councilwoman Deb Gross presents Bill Number 881, Reported a Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for October 26, 2022, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 841, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 717 and 719 Eureka Street. Bill Number 842, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Finance to Enter Into a Permanent Isment with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for the Installation, Maintenance, Repair, Operation, and Removal of a Sewer Line on City-Owned Property. Bill Number 844, Resolution Authorizing the U.R.A. of Pittsburgh to Acquire all the City's Right, Title, and Interests, if any, in into the following publicly-owned properties in the 13th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 174 N., Lots 80 and 81, located on the east side of North Homewood Avenue between Hamilton Avenue and Formosa Way, and formerly known as 608 and 610 North Homewood Avenue, Council District Number 9. Bill Number 845, Resolution Authorizing the U.R.A. of Pittsburgh to Acquire all the City's Right, Title, and Interests, if any, in into the following publicly-owned properties in the 25th and 26th Wards of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 46J, Lots 209, 210, 212, 219, 220, 337, and 341, and Block 46N, Lots 230, 231, 232, 233, 234, I'm sorry, 232, 234, and 235, located along the west side of Wilson Avenue between Burgess Street and Drum Avenue, and along the east side of Wilson Avenue between Cutler Street and Perry'sville Avenue, Council District Number 6. And Bill Number 846, Resolution Repealing Resolution 296 of 2022, Effective June 14, 2022, authorizing the U.R.A. of Pittsburgh to acquire all of the City's Right, Title, and Interests, if any, in into the publicly-owned properties in the 20th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 19G, Lots 2, 756, 131, and 206, Block 20M, Lots 77, 78, 79, and 112, and Block 20S, Lot 46, Council District Number 2.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor, the passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to motions and resolutions. And I have a few meeting announcements. This afternoon at 1:30, council will hold a cablecast post-agenda discussion on updates to the spending plan of the American Rescue Plan Act. That will be chaired by Councilman Wilson. Also, this afternoon at 3:30 p.m., council will hold a briefing for members on the mayor's preliminary 2023 budget. A second version will be held this Thursday at 11 a.m. So two briefings, two different days. Tomorrow, Wednesday, November 2nd, council will meet for the Standing Committees Meeting at 10 a.m. Speaker registration will close for this meeting at 9 a.m. Wednesday morning, and will be chaired by Councilman Lavelle. Next Wednesday, next week, due to the general elections, council will hold our regular meeting of council on Monday, November 7th at 10 a.m. The Standing Committees Meeting will be on Wednesday, November 9th at 10 a.m. And I think there's also a post-public hearing or post-agenda you have on Monday. What is that in regards? Could you?
There's a post-agenda.
Use your mic so the public can hear you, please.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
There's a post-agenda with the Public Safety Department. It's a timely post-agenda talking about the group violence initiative program and report out of their actions.
As, I think I have, I mean, I'll tell you the exact title. So there's like a lot of confusion because there's a lot of meetings called for around this subject. Let me just tell you real quickly. It's the post-agenda for the Pittsburgh Plan for Peace and Group Violence Initiative. Thank you. And that's on Monday at 1:30. Is there anything from members? Okay. So let me just give the number. I should have did this. I apologize. To register, speak at any of these meetings, please fill out the signup form on the council meeting webpage by the deadline. You may also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Councilman Burgess.
So on last week, I'm going to end with calling for some more meetings, but I want to give you in council a rationale as to why. When Councilman Lavelle and I last week was in Baltimore at the Cities United Conference on Reimagining Public Safety, which really its emphasis is on reducing gun violence. And toward the end of that trip, we were in the lobby making preparations to fly back, get to the airport to fly back home, when we got the reports of the shooting at the church on the north side, Destiny of Faith, pastored by a good friend of mine, Brenda For years, you know, we've quietly talked as pastors about when we do funerals that are high-risk, all of us are a little afraid, right? There was a plan to bomb another friend of mine's church on the north side. And so we talked, not publicly, Reverend Baddles, in the house, we talked kind of privately, all of us who are pastors, as we do some of these whole high-profile funerals of retaliation and our own safety. And so this was an example of some of our worst fears. Since that, I've gotten calls from pastors and actually media about what we should be doing or what to do, and I've heard all those things. Couple of things I want to say. First of all, I want to say that Mayor Ganey and the administration are doing all that they can, and almost all the things they are doing is right. Cities United, in terms of solution, says this, they say it better than I can. Reimagining public safety, which is their words, but they really mean also reducing gun violence, means identifying community-led means identifying community-led and/or supported solutions and strategic, and strategies that stop the bleeding now, so immediate stuff, and investing in the dismant- dismantlement of the system of inequity. That also means investing in these communities long-term. We must do both. It, it's very clear to me as I've talked, listened to people, and I guess I'll start this a little tomorrow and a little bit on Monday. I think there's widespread misunderstanding of, and even the speaker today, there's a widespread misunderstanding of the Plan for Peace. There's a misunderstanding of the role of Stop the Violence Initiative. And I think people don't understand how all these parts play, right? And for those people who do not live in these communities of violence, of course, there's always going to be their knee-jerk reaction of simply to police their way out of it and to say that they're wasting money by investing in the problems that have been 400 years in the making. African-Americans have been oppressed in this country for 400 years. Those problems of segregation and racism, of lack of employment and hopelessness persist since slavery times. The Supreme Court, right now, right now, is about to probably dismantle affirmative action because the Republicans actually hate black people. And will show its hatred in its policies. So we have an active Make America Great movement that is also Make America Great by going back to the 1950s, when black people were segregated and oppressed, where women were robbed of their right to choose and treated as second-class citizens. And certainly gay lesbians and trans people receive no rights. So, so I say all that to say, I, there, I've been up most of the night praying about this, you know. There's a passage, and I, I'm not, I don't usually talk much about scripture here, although in my private life, I think about it a lot. There is a passage in, in Luke where the people come to John, and they ask the same question. Groups, different groups come to John and says, what, what should we do? Here's a problem. He's preaching about this problem. They all come to him and say, what should we do? And I think we're at that moment. And so I think one of the things that council has to do, well, doesn't have to do, I'm suggesting that we do together as council, and I'm willing to help council lead, with the council leadership to do this. I think we need to go into our communities, unto the, into, and, and, and this is something that our president has been saying over and over again. But I think we can, as council, need to do this. And go to each of the zones of the police zones. There's six police zones. There's six, up to six public safety councils. I think we should go to each of the council, in each of those public safety meetings, with, with the, with the, you know, with the, with the authority of council, with council members, go to all the districts, explain what the city is doing, explain what can be needed, and then talk about how they can partner. Because even though we're doing this stuff, the city cannot do it alone. Churches cannot do it alone. We will only stop this violence when everybody, every church, every community group, every citizen, every neighborhood, the city, the county, the state. I won't ta- I won't, I won't riff on how awful the state is and the refusal, how they're in the throes of the NRA, and they will not pass any gun laws. These kids are so armed because the state laws are so lax. They, they're better armed than the police now, right? They have better weapons than the police do. And that's because of state law. So our system is blended. We have a blended system of focused deterrent, public health, and, and hospital-based violence intervention. It's a blended system. So difficult, but can be explained. I don't know that we've done as good a job as we can. And I think what we can do is support our mayor by going into our communities along in partnership with public safety and the Stop the Violence Initiative, explain what the city is doing and how they can participate. So I'm going to, that's my, my thought. I won't make a motion yet. That's what I think we should do. I can either make the motion now, we can talk about it internally. I've been thinking about it, and I, I was not going to say much, but it's been on my heart, right? I, I really believe, and, and, and the president's been saying this over and over again, that's been her thought, that we have to go in the communities and do this. But I think we should do this as a collective, right? Because I think my, 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 my council district needs to see Anthony Coghill and hear his story about police. I think it needs a Bobby Wilson. I think we need to go together to these, to, together. I think the situation is so great and so dire that we need to go do this together. And it, it's not a time, I don't think this is to listen to the community as much as this is a time to tell them what we're doing, what needs to be done, and how they can participate and get their participation in the programming. That's what I think. And so I'll, 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 I'll wait and listen before I make a motion if there's other comments.
Is there anything else from other members?
Sure, I'll chime in briefly. I think that's right. I think we definitely need to do it. One of the other things that struck me when we were at the conference in Baltimore was, and I think this is part of the education. As a city, in terms of the model that Cities United is using to actually reduce gun violence specifically, we actually have now, finally, all the components in place. In many of the sessions, other cities were looking to Pittsburgh, trying to figure out how we had gotten the model to where we've got, actually gotten it to. And so I think people fully understanding the various components of it, the intervention work, the prevention work, what happens after the shooting, the various components of the model, I think is important to educate the public on so that they can also realize we actually do have the right people in the right places and finally funded it, funded it to the extent that it actually can now work. So I, so I think Rev is, is right on this point.
Anything else from members? I'm going to go too. Go ahead.
No, I just want to say, I support that. I think that's a good idea. People are always asking me, what, what's council going to do to curb the violence, to curb the violence? You know, we don't run the police force, not to say that's the answer. But just to get more involved and to know what plagues each and every district, I fully support your efforts. So I'll be there.
So I have so much to say on this, but what I did over the weekend is I talked to Dr. Natalie, who does a lot of data assessment accountability. She was Governor Rendell's Director of Data Assessment Accountability. I have her looking at our policies that we put in place and seeing how crime has increased with some of the policies we put in place and, or have declined. So we know where we should be focusing some of our initial efforts, or some of our efforts. You know, we stopped people from, police officers from pulling over vehicles. That's where they got a lot of the guns previously. Has there been an increase since we've done that? Has there been a decrease? Has that been effective? So she's going to look at a lot of different data. And I think that, I want to just say, I think that council has done a lot of what they can do. We, it, I think it's clear this is not just about money at this point. We have put a lot of money in a lot of things, and we have fought for programs that we thought would work. We have not, you know, we have not given a great explanation to the public of the fact that they're coming for public comment and saying what's happened to the Stop the Violence Trust Fund funding. We, they should know that. We should have that out there publicly. That is absolutely something that, that people should know. This is what the council has helped to put in place. This is what, you know, some of the things that we can do. Our purview, what we can do is allocate funding and do some other things. So one of the things I talked to are city council solicitor. I talked to the mayor's attorney, Zeke Redlinger, and others. And I talked to Ricky Moody for our place, and all of us are just trying to come together and bringing resources to the community. I don't think we need to go to the community. I think they're sick of seeing us. I think the fact that we talk about the Zone 6 Safety Councils, or the, the Safety Councils in general being a resource shows how out of touch we might actually be. Because they really don't have that many people. They're really not that involved in all the community. So I think maybe we take people who can reach out to the community, get some resources into the area. I think by now, I've been on here since 2009, we could have taken a mobile unit to every block in the City of Pittsburgh and taken resources right to somebody's door. We could have done so much more by making sure that we were allocating money in, in a wiser way that was getting resources to people instead of organizations. So at this point, I'm going to start looking at some of those things. And I'm willing to work with members, and I think that Reverend Burgess and Councilman Lavelle have done a yeoman's job trying to make sure that we've done a lot in the, in the area of reducing gun violence. But I think at some point, we've got to look at some way to do things differently. And I think that right now, we need to start looking at what we have been doing and what we are effective in, and what we have, need to revisit. Or what we need to, you know, maybe do a little bit differently. And I think Councilman Wilson is going through a lot right now. I just want to tell you, my son lives on the north side. And he, you know, it feels like you've been very responsive to them in the north side. But there's only so much you as a council member can do, and I think that you are doing a whole lot. But, I mean, for all of us, it's, there's only, there's so much under our purview. I think that we, people came here and talked about, you know, groups of people coming together. I think we absolutely need a meeting with the school district, with the county, with the state and federal government to gather not just individual conversations, and we're working in silos, operating in silos, trying to solve a problem that is all of ours to share and all of ours to resolve. And the people are looking at us to come together and to knock it off and just stop playing the politics, stop trying to allocate money to this one or to that one. Let's try to figure out where the money is going to be most useful. And we need to stop the violence in the City of Pittsburgh, you know, first of all, because that's really where a lot of it's going on right now, and our people are hurting. But they're not just hurting from the violence. They're hurting, as you know, the things that are contributing to, to the violence in the community. So for all that being said, I'm hoping that we work together with the administration, with the county, with the state, federal government, to come up, and the school districts, to come up with some solutions. Anything else from members?
Yes.
Who?
Madam President, thanks. I just wanted to, so Reverend, Councilman, Reverend Ricky Burgess, you know, I appreciate your comments and talking about how we need to take it to the, you know, take what we're doing to the community and explain, kind of show them what we're, what we've been doing. I think we could look even deeper before we take that approach. I mean, I don't want to, you know, say that's, that's not going to be helpful, but I think, you know, possibly alongside it, because obviously, for obvious reasons, I've been waking up every day thinking the tra- you know, thinking about the tragedies that have been happening in my district and thinking about how it would suit us to look deeper into the actual protocols that are in place to, you know, try to address this. So I'm not sure if that's in a form of a post-agenda. I mean, I'd like to talk to you more about your, you know, the initial post-agenda, because when this came up, I initially thought about the protocols that are in place to, you know, to really get at the core issue here. You know, why, in, in the tools we have to help, so, you know, and what the protocols are around that. So like, why a, an individual sees life as so expendable and possibly their own that they would, you know, consider picking up a gun and using it? And the way it's been used on the north side and throughout the city, you know, you know, deserves a, a very deep dive into understanding what we have in place to even help it upstream, literally from, you know, what some of these Stop the Violence funds are, you know, what we've, will we come together on, you know, one Monday every month, the Stop the Violence Governing Board comes together and, and talks about how to address things more in an upstream fashion to curb violence in the future. And we've allocated funds to increase, you know, through Stop the Violence, to increase wages and, and really the support around outreach workers. We have also allocated $10 million to, in, in hopes to get under contract with, with AHN so that they can only use their model for, and this is the Roots Program, use their model for, you know, solving issues surrounding homelessness, but also the whole other part of it that we haven't even gotten to, which is the alternative police response. And really should try and understand, you know, if everyone keeps talking about, well, you know, we have this issue with police, the numbers are down, you know, everyone keeps talking about that. It's like, okay, well, we should do a deep dive and understand the call study, that the calls that are coming in, put that into a study to understand, really, you know, who, who's in charge of that? Who's actually doing the call study to understand the calls that are coming in and where police are being, are being distributed across the city? Our zones, we have six zones. Are they actually divided up properly? There's a lot of questions out there that I think don't have answers, and, and we could do a little deeper dive. So I'm hoping to address some of these, more of these concerns. And the, really the concerns that I was just bringing up here, address these concerns through either that post-agenda or another post-agenda to really try and get at really all, all, all the different protocols and, and actual ways that we're using data and, you know, information, whether it's through the outreach teams, to actually formulate how we're going to tackle the whole issue that's happening in the City of Pittsburgh. But, you know, we look to, we're looking at our other cities as well. I know Philadelphia is going through horrendous time with the amount of gun violence is happening there as well. So I just want to say thank you to, to council for, you know, each and every one of you that reached out, you know, to share, share support. I appreciate that. And the north side is looking for some relief right now, so appreciate all the time spent on the subject.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill?
Yeah, I'll be brief. I just want to say, I'm really happy to hear about the desire of council to want to be involved directly in what you're suggesting, Rev, economy as a full partner. Council, Madam President, I just want to say congratulations to you with bringing Dick's Corporation in and what you did this morning. I think in our conversation with them, it's much more about sports and athletic associations. They're invested in our kids and really ties in exactly what we're talking about right here, you know, reaching kids at a young age. I also would like to say, remind people that in 2018, while we bicker back and forth as Mr. Burr just pointed out, to Republican Party and gun control with the NRA, it was the very Dick's Corporation who banned assault weapons to be sold in their establishments. And, you know, if, if every company or every private sector who sells assault weapons would do that, then that's the short answer. But I wanted to, again, just commend you for bringing them in. What a great company. For them to take that stand in 2018, I think people forget about it, but it was a courageous stand. And, you know, it was very, you know, they made a lot of money selling assault weapons. So they looked at it in the face and said, it's not for us. And I call on others who sell assault weapons to do the same. Thanks.
Thank you. I just want to thank all of the members because Dick, Dick's Sporting Goods, for those people who don't know, gave $90,000 to each of us, $10,000 per district for our athletic associations today. And they did that based on the conversation we had about how the athletic associations have kept our kids off the streets and in something more positive during COVID. And when our schools were closed, when our rec centers were closed, it was those athletic associations that stepped up to the plate and put a lot of money into our kids. And they were unable to raise the money on their own by doing fundraising that they typically do and events that they typically do, like a night at the races and all that because of COVID. So they were really taking a lot of the money out of their own pockets. The parents were pitching in, the community was pitching in. But they really weren't making up the money that they needed to make up. So I want to thank all of you for recognizing that, that, how important that was and for the previous administration for putting the grant money in initially, and for the current administration for increasing that and making sure that we're doing more in terms of the youth athletics. But I do want to say, I think that Reverend, I'm ready to, you know, for us to do some things in the community, but I'd like to talk with you about it because I think, I think all of our safety councils do a great job in doing what they're doing. But I think that there's a lot of other people that are not part of a group that we have to reach out to. And I actually think they're not going to come to a meeting, so I think it's going to them with resources. So let's put something together where we can do that the best we can. Let's do what council can do. I wish that I could put some additional officers on because I do think that is part of the solution. But I do think that there's got to be a combination of efforts. And I do think the administration is working on so many different things, so many different levels and so many different ways. And I think that he has walked in the door with a lot of challenges, and, and it's just increasing. And so I just want to thank the mayor and how, you know, hope that he hangs in there and realizes that we're here to work with him and to make things a little bit better for the City of Pittsburgh and safer. Anything else from members? With that said, can I have a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting?
I'm moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.